Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall, welcome to Council chambers, and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Tuesday, March 2nd, 2004. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public, and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage, or heard via council phone. If you're watching this meeting live at 10:15, 10:20 a.m., today is election day, please get out there and vote before 8:00 p.m. If you're watching the evening rebroadcast, it's about 7:15, 7:20, and we encourage you to get out there in this last 40 minutes before the polls close. Today, election day. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas Garcetti, Grohan Labanj, Ledlam Iskowsky, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Vi Regosa, Weiss, and Padilla, 10 members present and in accord, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The council is officially in session. Before beginning with the matters appearing on today's agenda, let me recognize Councilmember Reyes for both a pledge of allegiance, and I think we have the best moment of inspiration we could have asked for today.
Will everybody please stand? Put your right hand over your heart for this great country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Councilmembers, ladies and gentlemen, introduce to you Mariam Núñez, Maestro Guicho Sisneros y sus dandys.
Como piedra preciosa, como divina joya, valiosa de verdad. Si mis ojos no me nieguen, si mis ojos no me aman, tu belleza es inmigrante. Tuve una vez la ilusión de tener un amor que me hiciera bailar. Luego que te vi mujer, yo te pude querer con todo y mitad mi alma. Eres la gema que Dios convirtiera en mujer para bien de mi vida. Por eso quise cantar y gritar que te quiero, mujer consentida. Por eso elevo mi voz bendiciendo tu nombre y pidiéndote al... Me hiciera bailar. Con todo y mitad mi alma. Eres la gema que Dios convirtiera en mujer para bien de mi vida. Por eso quise cantar y gritar que te quiero, mujer consentida. Por eso elevo mi voz bendiciendo tu nombre y pidiéndote al...
Councilmembers, you just heard the voices and song of one of the greatest trios in Mexico. Back in the late 40s, early 50s, there was a significant change and trend where trios became popular, and los dandys could be likened to, let's say what the Beatles were, to American culture in the 60s. They were that popular. My parents used to play their songs every Sunday morning. It brings back a lot of great memories for many of us who were relished in our music, and I thought it'd be a great pleasure to have them here with us. Today, we also have with us Mariam Núñez of the Núñez Sisters. Her sister Nelly was with us last night, she had to leave back to Mexico. Mariam and Nelly Núñez started singing at the ages of 11 and 13 in 1965. In 1966, they were invited to perform at the Million Dollar Theater, and you should know, the Million Dollar Theater was like the Mecca for many of the Mexican musicians here in Los Angeles. In 1968, their gold record, Disco Metro Hidalgo, was a great success. Mariam stopped performing since 1965, but Nelly continued for 15 years. Mariam will continue her tour as a solo composer. Herself is a composer, and many of her hits were composed by herself. And now about los dandys and Maestro Guicho Sisneros. Maestro Guicho Sisneros, y sus dandys, Salvador Chaval Torres, and Finio Primero, they made their first records in 1957, Hema Tres Regalos. Hema is the song you just heard. 1949 with Trio Piedras. 1960, performed at the Million Dollar Theater. At age 15, he composed his first song. Last night, when I asked him about his song, how did he come about writing it, he said it just came from the heart, it just flowed like water, it was so natural to him. These were the great songs that we hear today. They have named the street after Señor Sisneros de Durango, Mexico, his native state, and most importantly, he's celebrating 50 years anniversary of singer and composer. 50 years, folks, let's give him a round of applause. Los dandys' last CD, When Plant No, together with Armadas Núñez, they just finished a two-week engagement at Teatro Los Pinos, and will be leaving tomorrow. So today, it gives me great pleasure to present these certificates to Mariam Núñez. On the occasion of your visit to El Pueblo de nuestro Los Ángeles, vuestra señora, la reina de Los Ángeles, on behalf of the City Council, welcome. Thank you for sharing great music with us and great history. Muchas gracias por estar aquí con nosotros. We also have one for Maestro Guicho Sisneros. Thank you for joining to us with us today and sharing such great music. Thank you so much.
Muchas gracias.
For Salvador Chaval Torres, para los dandys.
Muchas gracias.
And that, last but not least, Finio Primero. Muchas gracias.
Muy buenas tardes, señor presidente, honorables concejales. Para Guicho Sisneros y sus dandys, es un honor estar aquí ante ustedes porque nosotros promovemos nuestra cultura musicalmente. Nosotros tenemos el bolero como una forma de cantar al amor, como una forma de que la gente, en lugar de andar de pleito, esté enamorada. Entonces, cada vez que requieran que les cantemos a ustedes con ese cariño, con ese sentimiento que sabemos hacerlo, cuenten con nosotros porque los mexicanos y los románticos deben ser nuestros aliados y nosotros aliados de ellos. Dios los bendiga, y muchas gracias por estar aquí.
Con mucho gusto, muy buenos días. Me da mucho gusto de ver, a saludarles y agradecerles este certificado para nosotros. Es muy importante. Muchas gracias. Mi nombre es Mariam Núñez. Toco el requinto, y también promuevo la música mexicana. Soy de Yucatán, y en todo el mundo trataremos de llevar nuestra música con todo nuestro corazón. Muchas gracias.
Thank you, councilmembers.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. And if you haven't seen the show at Teatro Los Pinos, it's not one that you want to miss. I was there a couple of years ago. Madam Clerk, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Vi Regosa moves, Ms. Han seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Iskowsky moves, Mr. Parks seconds.
Ms. Sikowski moves. Mr. Park seconds.
This is the time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
There are no public comment cards. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to comment on items not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will close the public comment period. Next item.
Next item, Madam President. Item number one is an item of notice for public hearing at the public conveniences or necessity in Council District Six. And I understand Councilmember Cardenas requests that matter be continued to March 23rd.
All right. Is there any objection to continuing item one until March 23rd? There are no public comment cards, so we will continue the hearing until that date. That will be the order.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items two through 13. Item number two, I believe there's an amending motion and a new ordinance that will be coming forward. On item number seven, there are 10 votes required to veto the commissioner's actions.
All right. We will call two and seven special. Any other specials, members, public hearings haven't heard on these items? We have a card on five as well. Let me call item three special. We have the controller here as well.
Item number five for Mr. Garcetti.
Mr. Garcetti calls item five special. Any other items? That's two, three, five, and seven. If not, open the roll on the remainder of the items. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Fifteen ayes. Those are approved.
Next item, Madam President, are items for which public hearings have not been held. Items 14 through 45, 10 votes are required for consideration.
All right. We do have cards on item 12, so we will call item 12 special. Madam President, that was in the... Oh, that was in the earlier... I'm sorry. All right. That had already been acted on. We have no cards submitted on the items just called by the clerk. Any specials members? 14 through 45. Seeing no specials. Yes, Mr. Weiss?
If we could, on behalf of Mr. Villarigosa, continue item 43 for one week. Oh, one day, sorry.
All right. Item 43 is requested for it to be continued for one day. Let me also ask that item 37 be continued until March 16th, the request of the mayor's office.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry. Can we call item 15 special?
Yes, we can. Item 15 is also called special. Anything else, members? All right. Other than that, called special, and those continued. Open the roll on items 14 through 45. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That, those are all approved. On the supplemental agenda, item number 46 is also an item for which public hearing has not been held. There are no cards submitted on item 46, so I will open and close the public hearing. Does anyone want to call 46 special? If not, open the roll on item 46. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved. I'm going back to the items called special. Item number two was called special for an amending motion, and I don't believe it's been distributed to the council members as yet. Do you wish to hold that one on the desk? Let's hold item two on the desk. Item number three was called special. All right. Members, item three is now before us. And let me call forward at this time, we have been visited by our city controller, Laura Chick. Let me also ask the city attorney to come forward to present this item. Ms. Chick, would you like to address us on item number three? Ms. Chick, would you like to address us on this matter?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Council members, today you have before you an item that I think helps to move this city forward, to maintain and to justly deserve the reputation we always want to be proud of. And that's the largest city, the largest and cleanest politically city in America. We all, we all raise money from the same fairly small group of people when we run for office or when we are sponsoring ballot initiatives. We all know what the rules are, and we all have seen the perception of pay-to-play to get business and contracts with the city grow in recent years too close, if not over the line, of reality instead of just perception. Passing this ordinance that changes our ethics rules in a way that simplifies them, doesn't make it more complicated, it simplifies the rules and takes the burden off of the backs of our already very busy volunteer citizen commissioners. It frees them up from the burden of being involved with fundraising for city campaigns. This moved much faster than I ever thought it would. And I'm very pleased that I think what we're going to see today is a unanimous vote to move this forward. However, not only thanking you, Madam President, Councilmember Ms. Sikowski, and Councilmember Wendy Grul for authoring the motion that brought this ordinance before us, I will look forward very much to working with you and the entire council to scrutinize and address any loopholes that might remain, particularly looking at non-candidate-controlled committees. And that we're still leaving commissioners fundraising for city campaigns. But I think what is before you today is an excellent step forward, and I'm proud to have been a part of this work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chick. Let me call on the city attorney to present the matter first, then we'll call the speaker here.
Thank you. Renee Stottle, Deputy City Attorney. Before you, council members, is the ordinance that the Rules Committee asked the city attorney to draft. It prohibits commissioner fundraising for elected city officials in any city-controlled committee of that elected official. It does not apply to state or federal campaigns of the city-elected official. It does also apply to ballot measure committees that are controlled by a city official or candidate. The ordinance is very aggressive. It does raise First Amendment concerns. There are cases out there that say that we can't do this. The ordinance is a good ordinance that pushes the envelope and perhaps maybe the strongest that we have in the country. But we believe it is one which is constitutionally defensible. It provides a clear and simple code of conduct that commissioners can follow. The ordinance is similar to the Federal Hatch Act, but actually goes slightly beyond the Hatch Act. For example, ways in which this ordinance is stronger are commissioners will not be able to organize a fundraiser or supply names for a fundraiser or invite a person to a fundraiser. It also avoids problems that have existed elsewhere and that have been struck down. It does not limit the ability of a commissioner to run for office, which is a problem that the California courts have struck down in other Hatch Act-type provisions. In a First Amendment analysis, the court requires the city to show a compelling government interest and that the provision is narrowly tailored to serve that interest. Using that analysis, the U.S. Supreme Court has upheld the Federal Hatch Act. Using that analysis, other courts, including the California Supreme Court, have struck down some restrictions on political activity that are overbroad, including restrictions in relation to ballot measures. Therefore, we believe the ordinance before you is narrowly tailored and does address the governmental interests of an appearance of a pay-to-play corruption. I'm present, I'm available to answer any questions you might have. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Our colleagues have been informed by our city attorney since technically we have a new ordinance before us that has not had public hearing, that we need to have a public hearing. We have two public speaker cards, so I'd like to invite those speakers forward before we move on to our other speakers that remain. Terry Tippett, if you'd like to step forward, and Wayne Williams are two speakers today. Thank you both for coming down here, and the mic's on yours.
Thank you. I spoke before the Ethics Commission when it was brought before them. I'm president of the Westwood Homewoman Association. I'm also chair of the West Side Neighborhood Council. Both organizations support this ordinance for the reasons that have been presented already. I'm not going to bore you with continuing and saying why. I'm also, I also have a city appointment to the Westwood Design Review Board. I took that, continue to take that appointment very seriously. Once I became a member of the board and I am now chair of that board, I no longer allowed myself to host a political fundraiser nor have my name listed as a political fundraiser for anybody because I never knew if that person would come before my board. We approve multimillion-dollar developments in Westwood, and I never wanted to compromise my position on that board. And that is why I'm here today also, to tell you I feel very strongly about this.
Thank you very much. Mr. Williams, welcome.
Mr. President, council members, my name is Wayne Williams. I am a member of the board of the Westwood Homewoman Association and also a board member of Valley Vote and chairman of the Campaign Finance Reform Committee for Valley Vote. And the Board of Directors of Valley Vote, which is an organization, as you all know, was successful in putting on the ballot and succession issue for the San Fernando Valley, would like to express that we overwhelmingly support the following motion that deals with the ban on political fundraising by LA city commissioners. The Board of Valley Vote has always been concerned with the quality and integrity of city government, and as such, we hereby express our strong support of the Ms. Sikowski, Grul, and Reyes proposal titled Analysis and Contracting Policies and Procedures. Simply put, the motion would act to create a city ordinance prohibiting city commissioners from engaging in any political fundraising activities on behalf of city-elected officials that would also work to establish an ordinance prohibiting city commissioners from participating in the evaluation and recommendation process of any contracts when those same commissioners sit on the governing board to approve such contracts. Valley Vote also recommends that the city council approve and further strengthen the motion so as to absolutely remove any further possibility of conflicts of interest between council members, mayors, commissioners, and those bidding for contracts in the future. And I just want to emphasize that when I spoke before the Ethics Commission with regards to this, I raised the issue that it is pervasive through the city. When I once called a council member's office to ask to speak with them, I was told that I could do so, but I was asked what business I represented. And it really should have been, who do I represent and not what business? And I'd like you all to keep that in mind as we go forward, and I hope you support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Appreciate that. That closes public comment for this. I'd like to call on Councilmember Ms. Sikowski, to be followed by Councilmembers Grul, Villarigosa, Smith, Weiss, and DeMiro.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I want to thank everyone involved in this. We really look back, this is a motion that we introduced, this is Councilmember Grul and I, in December. And here we are on March 1st with an ordinance, with public hearings having been held, at least two of them in front of the Ethics Commission, at least two of them in front of Rules and Ethics Committee, the Rules and Election Committee. And we are bringing forward, and then we have a letter by the city attorney, who very quickly looked at this as recommended by the Ethics Commission, as recommended by the motion. And the city attorney turned around an ordinance which said, not only this is an ordinance as presented to you, but this is an ordinance that the city attorney wholeheartedly endorses and believes is important for the very reason that others have spoken of. There is no question that probably the most important thing we, as elected officials, can do throughout this city is to set a standard that we, by which we govern ourselves and by which we say to those that are populous out there that we do have the strongest ethics ordinance, the strongest ethics standards, and where we find issues arising, questions arising out of whether or not that is being maintained, that we act to ensure it. We are acting today to ensure it, and I ask and hope that we have a unanimous vote on this. This is not saying that there are not other good ideas. In fact, even at Rules and Elections, there were other ideas saying, well, let's tweak it. Let's add this. Let's do a little more. Let's go even farther. Those things would take more time. Those things would go back. And I think the city attorney has even said that some of those things could be challenged, could be questioned in terms of the city attorney's comfort level with where court decisions have gone and how far we can go. This, the city attorney strongly endorses, not only in principle, but strongly endorses in terms of legally defensible. It's interesting, members, this actually was brought forward to the Ethics Commission, I imagine Ms. Pellam remembers, back in 96 and 97. But there, we didn't have the will of the city council supporting us. We did have in 96, the city attorney, then Mr. Han, who was city attorney at that time, also came forward to the Ethics Commission to strongly testify in support of this ordinance banning fundraising by our commissioners. Couldn't be more simpler, couldn't be more straightforward, couldn't be an important change in our system as we know it today, but one that when you really look at it at the bottom line, makes sense. Our commission form of government is something special in this city. We turn to citizens and say, will you volunteer? Will you give your time? Will you help us run the city and govern the city? We should hold them and ask them to be held to the standard of saying, you run the city as good citizens, as participating in good government. You should not be at the same time participating in fundraising. As simple and straightforward a principle as one can imagine. And that's why I think this one has been able to be brought forward as quickly as possible. And again, I hope that we can enact this with a unanimous vote. We have been told by the mayor that he will sign this. That doesn't discourage us from doing other things in the committee, looking at other options, looking at other tweaking. But today, we have an ordinance before us, clean, clear, and strongly supported. There was no testimony by any member of the public, by any commissioner in opposition to this. And I ask for an aye vote and unanimous vote so we can get to the mayor forthwith.
Thank you very much, Ms. Sikowski. The next speaker is Wendy Grul.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate it. I want to join with my colleague, Councilmember Sikowski, today, saying that this really was, I think, a very quick process, however, one that has been in place since 1997. And that today, we can make a statement very strongly that we believe pay-to-play politics, opportunities for cronies of all of that can be made a decision that is very simple. Banning commissioners from fundraising. Yes, there have been some who say, why not go farther? Why not wait? This is only one piece. Well, this has been an evolving process since the Ethics Commission was established many years ago. Every year, we're able to improve the system. Every year, we find abuses from the system, and we're able to make those changes. We have an opportunity today to say to the public that we are changing the business's usual attitude in City Hall and out in the community. We have an opportunity to have a very simple fix, to say commissioners should not fundraise. I think that Ms. Sikowski was right, that this debate has been going on for a very long time. And we've heard from so many people in the community how important this is. This doesn't mean we're taking away the First Amendment rights of a commissioner. They can support a candidate. They can even contribute to a candidate. But they can't go out and fundraise from anyone who potentially would be doing business with the city of Los Angeles. I've had many commissioners who've come up to me and said, thank you. Thank you so much for making it easier for me to serve. Some others have said, I'm afraid I might not be appointed if I'm not able to fundraise. And I said, give yourself more credit. You have skills and you have other abilities that make you a valuable part of public service. What we want to do is to restore our faith in government, to restore the credibility of our commissioners. And we have the opportunity to do that today. And I think, colleagues, it's important that we take this important step and make it a simple step. There will be other proposals, there are other issues that will be coming forward. I know Ms. Pellam, in her presentation, may talk about some of the other items that are going to be coming before the Ethics Commission. But this is something that has moved quickly because it is simple, it's easy, and it's just the right public policy and the right thing to do. So I would ask colleagues and share my hope that this is a unanimous adoption today by the entire city council. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Grul. The next speaker is Antonio Villarigosa.
Yes, Mr. President. Members, I want to thank publicly Cindy Sikowski, Wendy Grul, Ed Reyes, for this leadership on this issue and for putting this motion before us today. I want to thank the members of the Ethics Commission for unanimously passing this recommendation to all of us. Members, I must tell you... Members, I must tell you that I am resentful as I speak right now. I am resentful because I've opened up the newspaper day after day, week after week, and I see pay-for-play in City Hall. Now, I know this city family, I know the members of this council will sit around this table here, this horseshoe, and I know them to be honest, people of integrity. I know that the people who work for the city do not engage for pay-for-play in any way in the way that you would think or understand if you read the newspapers. And yet, we are here today passing this ordinance because a couple of people have done the wrong thing, not the right thing. And I think we're missing the big elephant in the room. I've said to the mayor on a personal basis, and I'm saying now, that I think it's time for us to move quickly to take away any impression in this city that there's pay-for-play. Because this motion doesn't do it. This motion is a first step. I believe that the relevant members of the airport commission and the members of the mayor's staff that have been identified in this way over the last few months need to do the right thing, they need to say it's time to go. I say that, I say that, members, because in my mind, when you look at what's happened over the last few months, every one of us have been cast with a pulse of disrepute, every one of us have been cast with guilt by association. And I think it's time for us to stand up and say, we support this measure that Ms. Msakowski, Ms. Gruel, and Mr. Reyes have put forth, we support it wholeheartedly, but this is only part of the problem, we need to do the rest. I rise to make my voice known and hope that some of you will join me.
Thank you very much, Mr. Villarrealgoza. Our next speaker is Councilmember Msakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a question I want to get on the public record. Another discussion early on in this about how far this ordinance goes in implying to activities elected officials and commissioners. And I've had, I know previous elected officials had trouble with the Ethics Commission interpreting the language of an ordinance in the way they felt was appropriate, even though the wording wasn't exactly that. And then they go back to correct it later. So I just want to get on the record and make sure it's very clear. This ordinance does not extend to fundraising by either elected officials and/or commissioners on behalf of nonprofit charitable organizations.
That's correct.
So any commissioner or any elected official can go out and raise money for a 501(c)(3), a nonprofit, any kind of charitable activity, and it is not included in this ordinance?
That's right. This only goes to controlled campaign committees, yes.
Political activities, sorry. I think, I just wanted that on the record so that we don't have a problem with the Ethics Commission coming and saying, well, we wanted it to say that, we thought it said that. It does not, very specifically, it does not.
It does not.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith, if I might, Lee Ann Pellam with the Ethics Commission, I would just echo the city attorney's view. We've worked very closely with the city attorneys' office on this, so I don't expect that there will be any question of interpretation.
Thank you very much. Mr. Smith, our next speaker is Mr. Padiya.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Colleagues, somewhere I wanted to say or ask is, let me also begin by commending Councilmember Msakowski and Councilmember Gruel for bringing this issue this far and this quickly because we do have some perception or misperception to dispel. I think it's very important to maintain the public's faith in their government, the understanding that our decision-making around here, the basis for our decision-making is one based on integrity and credibility. I agree with something very important that Ms. Gruel mentioned in her comments, which is, this is good public policy. Commissioners, it took me a while to get here, commissioners I recognize as city officials who do appreciate the fact that they volunteer their time. I do appreciate the fact that they volunteer their expertise. But anyone who looks at the charter recognizes that a commissioner volunteer or otherwise is a city official and has specific responsibilities as noted in the charter. So based on that, I think it is only correct that we treat them in a slightly different category, mind you, than any other resident of Los Angeles or any other person seeking to involve themselves in civic affairs in Los Angeles. But unfortunately, that's not the way that it was painted when this issue has most recently been pushed in the public's eye, it has most recently been pushed politically. It has been pushed, I think, as Councilmember Villarrealgoza said, because of this term pay-to-play. It was politics that got it here. And colleagues, I support this measure, I support this, but I also want to stand up and say to us, not to the press but to us, that there's a very delicate balancing act here. Are we legislating based on policy or are we legislating based on perception? And when we begin to legislate based on perception, I think we need to do so very, very cautiously because we could risk starting down a very slippery slope. And so I wanted to highlight the fact that I support this, I want to highlight the fact that I believe it's good public policy, I want to highlight the fact that I believe it so because we're talking about commissioners today. I know this conversation won't end today, but today we're talking about commissioners. And it's all supported for the reasons that I've articulated. I also want to point out a couple of things that we emphasized in the Rules Committee, which is, this applies to city campaigns or city elections, not to non-city elections. And correct me if I'm wrong, sat upon the table, I also want to recognize that as far as the commissioners goes with respect to their First Amendment rights, we're talking about commissioner fundraising, not commissioner contributions. Because some people may want to take that step, but we also have to respect the First Amendment law that is on the books and I think the city attorney has done an excellent job in guiding us very carefully here. I also want to recognize what Councilmember Smith has mentioned, which is, this applies to political campaigns, not to the charitable fundraising that some of us are called upon to do from time to time, whether it's large charitable causes like the American Diabetes Association, the Roseds coming up, or small or community-based charitable causes. And finally, ballot measures. This talks about candidacy, it talks about city campaigns, it doesn't affect our involvement should we want to campaign and assist another Prop Q effort, another Prop F effort, another Prop K effort, or some of those things that our city needs from time to time as well. So with those points of emphasis and clarification, colleagues, I'd ask for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Padiya.
And just one clarification, it does apply to ballot measure committees only if an elected city official or candidate controls the committee.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Han is next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Colleagues, I stand here to agree with all of you, support what we're doing this morning. And just reading the report today, it basically says, the city attorney states that this draft ordinance advances the city efforts in dispelling the public appearance of pay-to-play corruption and to rebuild the public's faith in city government. And while it may be good policy, I do think what we are doing is trying to dispel a perception. And frankly, it was probably good policy five years ago. It may have been good policy 10 years ago, but the fact of the matter is, we've all sort of gotten religion. Because, you know, we're, I believe, we're reacting to a situation, we're reacting to some bad press, we're reacting to truly what you said, that we're all sort of painted with this broad brush of political corruption and no one likes that. So we're trying to do something to restore people's faith back in government. But I will say with all of you, you know, this doesn't go far enough. This doesn't go far enough. Singling out commissioners, which is maybe the right thing to do, will not dispel the public's perception because perception is something that is in your mind, whether or not it is based on reality, it is based on perception. So, well, I know I won't have support this morning because I know this body wants to implement this today. What I wanted to do was attach a verbal amendment to this, that we actually put this off and come back with a more comprehensive policy, a real reform that includes contractors, bidders, land use applicants, lobbyists from contributing to and fundraising on behalf of city elected officials and candidates, political parties, boutnets, charities, you know, we're doing this piecemeal. And we're doing this because commissioners have been in the press lately. But I dare say, in a month, in two months, in three months, somebody else is going to be in the headlines. Maybe it will be a contractor, maybe it will be somebody who is bidding on an RFP in this city for business. And then we'll come back and we'll say, gee, maybe we ought to ban that, maybe we ought to look at that. Like I said, I don't think I have support this morning to delay this particular part. So what I will ask is, we'll unanimously vote to implement the ban on commissioner fundraising, but I ask at the same time, and I'm not exactly sure how to word this, but can we actually look at everything we just mentioned? And we ask the city attorney to come back with a comprehensive draft ordinance working with the Ethics Commission that actually looks at a complete package to really, once and for all, hopefully, change the perception of how we do business in this city. And I would ask for your support on that this morning.
Is there a second to that?
There's a second for Mr. Laban. I'd like to next call on Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to ask a couple of questions. Ms. Pellam, on the discussion at the Ethics Commission, I've made an appearance there, I just wondered, what was the outcome of the concern that was offered about how a commissioner could get off a commission, go fundraise, and how often they might return? Did that get any consideration though? Because what I was concerned with is that we not have a situation like many times in public office where staffs leave an office, go out and campaign, and come back immediately and we have commissioners doing that.
The commissioner, the commission did hear discussion on that and as you know, it was discussed at the Rules Committee as well. The commission did not propose amendments to this to address that issue. The theory that there might be a revolving door is one that I think they're aware of, but I think their sense was to hold off until we see whether or not that happens in practice. I think there's generally a philosophy of not wanting to govern the behavior or attempt to govern the behavior of individuals when they're private citizens, so if they're not a city commissioner or a city decision-making authority, it would be a bit trickier to govern that. So we didn't pursue that at this time.
And also a question for the city attorney, when will this be implemented? And I thought at some point in our history that we implemented rules regarding elections, that it was generally during the cycle of elections. What do we view that the impact of people that may be running for office in the middle of a cycle that may be disadvantaged, or is there any issues or consideration of whether it's retroactive to the beginning of the campaign cycle?
This ordinance would be just like any ordinance, once the council adopts it and the mayor signs it, then it's published and it becomes effective 30 days after that. In terms of it being applied retroactively, there's no language in here that would make it apply retroactively, I think there would be a problem in actually doing that. In terms of it applying during the middle of an election cycle, we don't think that this provision creates that problem. There have been provisions in the past that have been a problem where, for example, the council was considering a change to the matching funds formula after candidates had already decided to sign up for the matching funds program. So we don't think that this proposal is like that.
I'm just wondering, say if somebody's in the middle of a campaign now and they have fundraisers planned two months from now and they're making contact, would this put them in some form of violation at this point? Or if they made the contact before the ordinance went in, or how would that work?
The ordinance, the contacts in terms of soliciting, engaging in the fundraising activity, inviting people to fundraisers and soliciting contributions, that will become prohibited on the date this ordinance becomes effective, which will be about 30, 45 days from now.
How would we deal with that if something's in progress? Maybe Ms. Pellam can comment on that.
Again, I think to echo the city attorney's comments, we would not be, we would not be seeking to enforce the law when the law wasn't in effect. So that's not something that we would retroactively look to.
Thank you very much. One thing, colleagues, I think having looked at this and participated at the Ethics Commission, I think also at the Rules Committee, it is important that we move forward. And I'd like to echo the comments of Mr. Villarrealgoza that it is something that none of us should have to answer for in the sense of what other people have done, but I think it's also clear that the perception often is greater than the actuary deed. And so it is important, as I mentioned at the Ethics Commission, and hopefully as the Ethics Department begins to look at a revision of its current rules and priorities, that it will begin to look at these larger issues versus some of the things that have been in the forefront of looking at the number of checks and checking the mechanical process, but really looking into the whole issue of conflict of interest or the perception of conflict, which I believe is what is your number one, or what I would think is your number one role. I'd also like to add my voice, and I think from the point that Mr. Villarrealgoza made, that no, and this is something that I have to give my biases, having grown up in the Los Angeles Police Department, that we've grown up with the idea that no one person, no group of individuals are greater than a department or the city. So if we have individuals in which are bringing this favor to this city, that people are bringing on a daily basis the kinds of comments that we are answering for and not a part of, they need to make the right decisions to move on as it relates to the health and welfare of this city. And I hope that as we move forward on this piece of legislation, that they also will get the hint that it's important that not only is the city run efficiently, but the people that look to us as elected members believe that it's being run clean and without corruption. And so I would hope that that message is loud and clear, at least from two speakers today, that it is time for those who are the ones that are responsible move on so that the city could get beyond this dark day in our history and begin to deal with the most important issue, which is providing services to the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Parks, Mr. Weiss, next.
Thank you, Mr. President. I first want to congratulate my friends and colleagues, Ms. Gruel, who's been fighting this issue for so long, Ms. Msakowski, who has devoted so much energy on the particular matter that we have before us. And I do want to mention, Mr. Parks, I believe it was your motion in '03 that began the discussion of commissioner fundraising. That was your motion, wasn't it? I thought I saw your name there. So thanks to all of you for doing this and thanks to our controller for working so hard to put this at the forefront. I'm going to vote for this, but I want to make, I want to make something clear in terms of my own perspective and orientation on these issues. If you believe that voting for this measure today will end or solve this issue of pay-to-play, I believe you're wrong. I believe you're just wrong. If it's corruption in city government that you fear, I don't believe that a set of existing regulations or indeed the new regulations are the ticket. The reality is, we have an extensive web of laws already on the books, including some that I'm familiar with, that make it a federal felony to engage in some of the acts that I've read about in the newspaper. I'll just tell you about a couple of them. 18 U.S.C., Section 666, theft or bribery from a program receiving federal funds. Section 1951, the Hobbs Act. Extortion involving interstate commerce. Sections 1341 and 1343, mail fraud and wire fraud. Or, one of my favorites because I used it in my last case in the U.S. Attorney's Office, Section 1346, depriving the public of their intangible right to the honest services of government employees and public officials. That's what's implicated here. And prior regulations and new regulations, with all due respect to the web of ethics laws that we have in the city and the people that support them, are not enough when it comes to getting people not to commit federal corruption crimes. And I think this goes beyond the issue of mere regulations. I mean, the allegations here, frankly, are that a culture of permissiveness, at best, was permitted to fester and grow in City Hall. And so the answer to that culture of permissiveness is to stop it, is to stop it at its core so that the entirety of city government is not tarred by those allegations. so that the entirety of city government is not tarred by those allegations. As some of you know, I recently witnessed something and investigated something that I consider to be very serious. Evidently, others disagreed with my assessment of that. But that's how you deal with problems like this. You insist that there shall be no culture of permissiveness in one's administration. You get to the bottom of it, you follow the truth wherever it leads, and you make those changes. So it's a good thing we're doing today, but if corruption is your concern, there's a lot more that one would ought to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. I'm going to call on Mr. Reyes, next.
Thank you, Council President. One of the main reasons why I signed on to this ordinance and I wanted to thank Council Mr. Sikowski and Councilman Gruel, is that, as you see, when we were going through our review of the commissioners, I kept asking, where do they live? What part of the city are they from? And it was no secret where the majority of the folks actually live. And these are folks who are running our departments. So when I look at the issues as a city, as one city, what's happening in the East Side, what's happening in South Los Angeles, in Central Los Angeles, in parts of Pacoima, and I wonder, where's the expertise to understand the dynamics of those neighborhoods at the commission level? Because it's the commission that drives the departments, along with the mayor and our work, the whole balancing act that we have here in the city government. So yes, my motivation is based on what makes an effective city. Are we truly getting the talent? Are we truly getting the expertise that talks about change on our day-to-day lives and how we manage our resources? And that's, I think, the critical question. In my mind, we talked about change in the city. And so yes, we are going against the grain of a culture that's evolved in City Hall for decades. This just didn't happen this past year or when these acts were committed by the commissioners. This has been a method of operation in the city for decades. And now we're calling it on the carpet. Now we're questioning it, which is very, very important. What is the next step? We need to start evaluating not only how our commissioners are behaving and how they generate resources, but let's talk about the formulas of allocation of resources that commissioners promote. Why aren't we changing how we administer our resources for those areas in our city, in the Valley, in San Pedro, in South Alene, East LA? How are we spreading the resources? How are we becoming effective? Do we have the commissioners that have the ability to direct our department heads and their personnel? Those are the fundamental questions we need to get to in improving our city, in leveraging what we have, in addressing the need of those who truly are suffering on a day-to-day basis. So I want to thank my colleagues for their support. It's obviously I stand here in support of this effort, and yes, it is the beginning. But at least now, we have opened up the door. And now we have taken a look at that giant that tiptoes around City Hall and pointed to him out and said, look, it's not going to be business as usual. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Zine of the Third District. Mr. Zine? Mr. Zine is walking forward. Councilman Dennis Zine.
Thank you. I was in the back, and I apologize for my delay. The Ethics Commission was established for a specific purpose, to make sure we have clean, honest government in Los Angeles, correct?
I think that's correct.
Okay. You're the executive director of that commission.
That's correct as well.
And there's a commission that has been established that responds to issues and concerns to make sure we keep it clean and honest in Los Angeles.
Our goal is to bring forward policy issues for the council to consider, as you're doing today, yes.
So the ultimate goal is to keep it a clean, honest, open, transparent government for the people of Los Angeles?
I think that's a fair statement, yes.
Okay. How long has the Ethics Commission been in place?
Commission was created by the voters in 1990.
And that was as a result of concerns in the city of Los Angeles?
That's correct.
And ever since that time, we've made amendments, we've made changes, and as we make changes, other changes take place, and then we counter those changes. Correct?
I think the political circumstances that we see changing year to year is an evolving process. And so yes, the commission was created to report and respond to issues that surface, yes. So we bring, we have a very public policy process where we bring people in to testify before the commission, meet with the Rules Committee and so forth. But yes, the idea is to try and make sure that we have rules that address the circumstances that we see.
And as the circumstances change and the problems appear, we want to plot those to make sure that we keep this an honest, open, transparent government for the people of Los Angeles.
I think that's our goal, yes.
And what we see now happening is a problem that's emerged, this pay-to-play, which has been common reference to in the dialogue and in the media. And we're trying to take care of this issue because of the commission activity. The question, and I support tightening the rules, but I want to do is tighten the rules and coming from law enforcement, as two of my other colleagues, or three of my colleagues, we want to have rules that are enforceable, that are understandable, and everyone's on the same page, and there's no confusion. And what frustrates me, and I sit on Rules and Elections with two of my colleagues, is we're putting patchwork, in my view, when we need to come in with little concise. And I commend Councilmember Sikowski and Councilmember Gruel for bringing this forward and being tenacious with it. And I ask you, as the executive director, is this going far enough? Is there more that we need to do? I know commissions are established for a purpose. If a person wants to be a commissioner, how do they become known? How do they become known to the elective officers? They become known through campaign contributions, they become known through a political process? They can do all they want in fundraising, and once they're a commissioner, then we're saying, you can't do it anymore. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. But that still does not prevent them from doing independent expenditures, which to me is a root of a major problem, that we can't touch because of First Amendment rights. So what I would ask, if we're going through, and I'll support this today, and I'll continue to support to make it open, fair, honest, transparent, but what do we need to do to bring down to the people of Los Angeles what we really want so we don't have this saga that opens it up again and that you and the commission have to go through and review it again? And you've got very dedicated commissioners who are very committed to making it right. How much more do we need to do, in your estimation, I know you've been there a long time, to finally have it to the point where we can feel comfortable and we're not going to find another loophole around the corner? Because the more I look into the issues, I find more loopholes. And coming from law enforcement, you try to tighten those rules as tightly as possible, and then you find that there may be a problem with the court, and you've got to deal with that. In your position, how far are we away from having it so it can be very substantial and very tight so we don't have to keep reviewing this as we see happening with a breaking story, which I believe is what prompted what we're at today?
Mr. Zine, after the response, I'll ask you to press your button again.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember. I think it's, again, the commission over the years that we've been in existence is attempting to do exactly as you described. We have a very broad mandate in the city charter to try and help uphold the governmental process as one that is open and transparent and accountable. And so that's the work that the commission has done, that's the work that the commission has done in tandem with the council over the years on extensive discussions and important discussions like today's. I don't think that these issues are ever static. I don't think you can take a snapshot in 1990 and expect that those laws will have the same, the same weight, the same effect in 2004. I think it's very appropriate to review the laws and look to see that they're effective. I think, as you know from law enforcement, at the same time, there are ways that people who choose not to abide by the laws can find to do that. And so that's an important function of an agency like ours and others, such as the District Attorney's Office and the U.S. Attorney's Office, when issues rise to those levels to address them as best as they can. But the short answer to your question is that the laws are not static. Political circumstances evolve, and I think that's what the voters designed and had in mind when they created the Ethics Commission, was to help be a body that would focus on these important issues and bring forward a citizens' panel with public inputs, best thinking on how we can address the circumstances. Now, I think from, for this particular issue that's before the council today, the Ethics Commission, as Councilmember Sikowski indicated, had first addressed this issue back in the late '90s, in 1997, by a motion by then-Councilmember Nate Holden. And so we're very pleased to see that the issues come to fruition today through this discussion, through the leadership of Council President Padilla, Rules Committee, and your involvement as well. And so I think the commission's view, after extensive hearings, was that this is sound public policy, that it's in fact a public policy that is a bit firmer and clearer for people to understand than our approach was in 1997. And so I think we're very pleased to see that it is a simple line that will be easily understood and that sends a message, frankly, from the top of city government. If the council approves this today, it's saying that the city council, and if the mayor adopts it, that the mayor supports doing everything that we can to make sure that there is no perception that city appointments or city decisions are tied in any way to fundraising capabilities. So I think, again, it's a fluid situation. This is a very important step, and we're in the right direction. We will continue, as we always do, to monitor if there are other circumstances that come up, such as those that Councilmember Parks described, or the concern about independent expenditures, which is one that we continue to look at and grapple with. But we won't shy away from bringing forward additional recommendations if they're needed. But there's also a saying that the perfect is the evil of the good. And so I think this is an important step in the right direction today, and our commission's vote, five to nothing, a unanimous vote in support of that, I think, is also indicative.
And I think what I'm hearing is you'll probably find that same unanimous support from this elected body, because we don't want to be viewed as the evil empire of the city of Los Angeles. We want to be viewed as dedicated people working for the people. I know commissioners, they don't get compensated. They do the job in those particular commissions to help establish the mandate that has to be carried out for all the different departments. And it frustrates a lot of us when we're trying to do that work seven days a week and something comes up, and then it tarnishes the good work. And we can see that happen in other professions where situations occur and the good work that many is tarnished. And hopefully, this will be a positive step in the right direction. It's sad that Councilmember Sikowski had to wait from 1997 till now to make this happen. I know government is slow, but hopefully today we can speed it up and work with you. And I know the dedication you have to the Ethics Commission, and I want to compliment you on that because you're always there, making sure it's done correctly. And also, our controller, Laura Chek, for what she's done to bring this about. So hopefully, we can conclude this today with a very positive note and then go forward and continue to do the good work for the people.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Mr. Patacunas.
Thank you. I'm not vote counting, but I have a prediction to make. I think this is going to be a unanimous vote today. But I think that it's only appropriate that we convey to the public perhaps some truths about the limitations of this motion. Oh, before I say anything more, before people turn off their ears to what I'm saying, I support this motion, because I'm going to ask some questions to prove to the public that we're getting a little closer, but we're really not getting closer to what the overall perception objective is here. And I want to start with a question. Can a commission, if this passes and it's signed by the mayor and becomes part of how the city operates, can a commissioner thereafter, can they contribute to an IE, independent expenditure on behalf of a candidate that is perhaps going to support the name of somebody who's running for office in the city?
This wouldn't prohibit a commissioner from contributing.
It would not.
It would not. It would not prohibit a commissioner from contributing.
Could they solicit funds for that independent expenditure?
Yes, they could.
Yes, they could. So today, a commissioner could actually solicit funds to help someone who's running for office, say for city attorney or for controller. And then tomorrow, if this were in place, they could continue to do that, they just couldn't do it directly to the controller.
They could not do that on behalf of the person who's running for office, that's right. They could support a committee that is independent of that candidate's or official's reelection efforts.
But the committee's purpose for existence could be and is, many times in these independent expenditures, for a specific support of an individual who's running for office.
That's correct.
So what we've done is we've shifted, this will in fact shift the, some people's, just the way they would want to help somebody get elected. Could it be perceived that way?
Well, I think that it won't be prohibited from them contributing and fundraising for independent groups, that's right.
So let me be a little bit more direct. If Commissioner A wants to help someone get elected, they can give up to $500 of their own pocket to that person directly because of their First Amendment right?
Or a thousand if they're a citywide candidate, but yes.
Okay, thank you. Or a thousand for a citywide candidate. But if they wanted to have some fundraising activity, that they want to help someone get elected, they can no longer do that directly to the candidate's campaign, but they can do that for an independent expenditure that's going to still spend that money to help that person get elected.
That's correct.
Correct. Like I said, I support this motion because it is doing something. And I want to thank Ms. Sikowski, Gruel, and Reyes for introducing this. But at the same time, I also want to remind the public that in 1996, unless my records are incorrect, there was a council member, Holden, who actually introduced a similar motion. And then it kind of sort of died in about 1997 or so and didn't get any more activity. But I want to thank my current colleagues, this is a new council, and we do want to get rid of this perception of this cutesy little phrase, pay to play. And unfortunately, I think as long as there's cutesy phrases that are sexy to the press, we're going to be pushed to do more things like this that unfortunately inadvertently will not actually black and white change how things happen around here. And I just saw a movie just the other day that dates back several thousand years where there was corruption going on then, and motives and things of that nature that actually had some pretty major effects on society at that time. My point is this, I commend the Ethics Commission for doing the job that they've been asked to do. I commend my colleagues for trying to make this system more open, more transparent, more fair. But the thing that I want to make sure that I stress again today, as I stressed before, we can only pass ordinances that don't infringe upon people's constitutional rights. And as long as people have constitutional rights and freedom of speech, then they will have the opportunity somehow, some way to support people to get elected to office. And it's unfortunate that what we're doing here is just doing something, but it's really not going to do much if somebody really, really wants to do something wrong.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to the members of Public Group, who've been so patient here. I know many of you are here for two other items, and I appreciate your patience on this. But I wanted to thank my colleagues, Cindy Sikowski and Wendy Gruel, for introducing this motion. My daddy said I had to vote for it, so I'm going to. I wanted to kind of pick up some of the pieces of what people are talking about, what we're doing today, because I think it's instructive to try to figure out what it is that we're doing so the public is clear about it, so that we're clear about it, and so that we see the way forward to continue to clean up the city. I'll use a metaphor, there's two ways of cleaning your house. Every week, we all probably clean up some of the dust that gathers on the shelves, the dirt that's on the floor. And sometimes we push it in different places in the house. We push it to corners, which is much better than having it right there on the floor. We put it in places where we can't see it. And I think today, this is an important kind of weekly cleaning, if you will. We're doing something that's an important step forward, something that fundamentally gets to the heart, not necessarily of corruption, but a relationship that just shouldn't exist. We should ask people to provide public service in a way that isn't connected with their involvement in campaigns. It's simple. I know this will be unanimous, and I'm glad that it's moving forward, and I thank the leadership of the Ethics Commission, the staff of the Ethics Commission, and also our council for doing that. But you've heard me say this once, and you'll hear me say it time and time again, and I know Valley Vote has done a lot on this as well, and I look forward to working with them in the California Clean Money Campaign. But if we want to do spring cleaning, really cleaning up house, because bottom line, commissioners will come to fundraisers, they won't be fundraising, but people will know they're there because they're going to be able to give their one check. We haven't completely cleaned house and doing this. The way we can completely clean houses involves public financing of campaigns. And until we get to that system here in the city of Los Angeles where people can opt in by, say, collecting $500, $5 checks from their constituents, so that people who can only write a $5 check feel as empowered as somebody who can write a $500 check, we will not be changing the system fundamentally. And I would like to see the city of Los Angeles, we can't do it in a difficult budget year, but go to the people of Los Angeles, as the state of Arizona has done, a much more conservative state than the city is, where they voted to impose a small fee increase on themselves to be able to fund that. We can't do it now because we don't have enough funding to do it. But until we have that option, we will be doing a lot of weekly cleaning, important cleaning, but I can't wait until we get to that spring cleaning too. So I'll be supporting this. Today, I want to thank Wendy Gruel and Cindy Sikowski again for their leadership on this. And let's get to the root of the problem as our next step. Thank you.
Mr. Labonge.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. You know, I have a great love You know, I have a great love of history of Los Angeles and look back. Mayor Shaw was here, that rocked the establishment here and all the challenges that look back in that era. And then Fletcher Bowden came in, and the squares named after him across the street, because as a former federal judge, he put in as mayor to stabilize Los Angeles. And the LAPD was rocked, and WH Parker, is that correct? Councilman Park was put in as the chief of police, because the LAPD had problems. And my grandfather, who was a sergeant, because you couldn't go higher than sergeant if you paid somebody. This is in the '30s, horrible part of LA. LA confidential. And then through the years, there was some challenges, I believe, in the Yordi administration in the harbor on a matter. Then unfortunately, there was a situation with Mr. Bradley, where he was trying to help a bank out, and he was a board member, I believe, that led to the creation of the Ethics Commission. Is that right, Ms. Pellum?
That's correct.
And then also, I remember a council member, a consultant, who was their campaign consultant, who had them in their office, and there was an LA Times reporter writing at the same time. Do you remember that story in the paper? That there was some conflict there that led to changes? Everything happens in that. Is that correct?
Yes.
And then there was also the recent story about situations, how people may have been treated at the airport improperly, that kind of brought us to this point. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
You know, so constantly, there's stories in our history that talk about incidents that have taken place that allow us to get to be here. Number one, I believe in public financing, and it's real important. Number two, I believe in many of the things that Ms. Hahn spoke of earlier, that to put it all on the table. Number three, I greatly support what Ms. Siskowski and Ms. Gruel and Mr. Reyes have brought up now. But every time we do something, and I believe in this very strongly, information is knowledge is power, that people know what we do. We have to run for office, we have to raise money. Is that correct?
Yes.
And pay to pay, is there pay to play in Los Angeles?
I think the commission heard a testimony of people who were concerned about the fundraising and how that may or may not tie to city decisions.
But is there pay to play in Los Angeles?
That's not a term I use.
All right, okay. I just want to say that there is not a term, so I don't want to think it's LA Confidential 2004, okay? But I think everything that we need to do, information is knowledge is power. And the last time we were here, Ms. Pellum, and when we were in our office recently, I talked about wanting to have a computer outside this council chamber, so anybody who walked through the door could punch a number to see what Tom Labonge got, or who Tom Labonge fundraises from, who gives him money, so they would know. Because I think that's important. I remember I was on Wilshire Boulevard, and please allow me another 30 seconds, Mr. President, and somebody challenged, did I get money from a location where we were talking about a housing? I did not know, but I said, go to your website and find out, because I don't know all those facts. It's really important to get the facts out. I also want a friendly amendment, that all of our campaign statements go to neighborhood councils. That's our leadership forum out there, so that they can see who gives us money, so they can understand that process there that is involved in it. This is one step, members, and many steps. But I like what you said, there's no pay to play here. That's a headline from a newspaper, is that correct?
So that's not a term I use.
That's not a term that you use, okay? And I think anybody who does that should be fully prosecuted by the law, because it ruins the integrity of this great city and this great country and that great seal of the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Siskowski.
Thank you. Mr. Labonge, we won't know if we have pay to play in the city until the DA has concluded his investigation, until the US Attorney has concluded his investigation. We had an audit that was done that said there are things that don't look good in terms of practices and policy. We had an audit that said there may have been criminal activity. We now have criminal agencies looking at that very issue. I'd like to believe we don't have pay to play in this city, but you and I and Ms. Pellum are not the ones who make that decision. Right now, it's in the hands of people who are looking at it, and will make that decision and that determination based on their investigation. When we heard about those suggestions, we brought this motion in, because aside from the fact of whether or not we have it, we now have a perception. This ordinance goes a long way to eliminating that perception. We brought an ordinance in, a motion in, that said commissioners shouldn't be involved singularly behind closed doors in back rooms choosing contractors. That motion went in, and about three weeks later, the mayor said, you're right, and he issued an executive directive to stop that. We also have a motion coming forward on that in Rules and Elections to say, let's make it a law, not just a directive. Members, I'd like to just read quickly. In 1996, we had the city attorney Jim Hahn, who went to the Ethics Commission and said, there is a perception that you get to become a commissioner based on past fundraising activities, and that you hold your position if you can continue to engage in those activities. Commissioners have this unique position, and they are appointed by the mayor, confirmed by the council, and for the most part, their job is as policymakers. The perception that we have, commissioners who are in effect serving two masters, that in addition to serving the public, they are also having to somehow provide fundraising activities on behalf of all of us elected officials, I think is not a good one. We need to keep commissions separate, I think, from the fundraising process. I think this overriding, compelling government interest is that we want to restore the public's confidence in government. That was Jim Hahn's testimony in 96 to the Ethics Commission. Today, February 20th, the mayor wrote us a letter. He said, I will sign the proposed ordinance to ban commissioner fundraising if it is adopted by the city council, because I believe that it is important that we take steps to eliminate any perceived nexus between fundraising and government decision-making. Let's give the mayor this ordinance to sign. The commission is already looking at other items, including those that the mayor's proposed, including those, I think, that are part of Ms. Hahn's motion to send to the committee and commission. But let's do this today. We have a perception now, we've had a perception in the past. This goes a long way to restoring at least some degree of confidence that citizens who are commissioners aren't there to do another job other than doing the job that we asked them to get sworn in to uphold their, this city's charter and this city's rules. Again, I ask for unanimous vote on this.
Thank you, Ms. Siskowski. I'd like to recognize Ms. Gruel, to be followed by Mr. Zain and Mr. Padilla.
I was going to actually call for the question, but Mr. Padilla would like
Any objection to that?
to speak. Are you ready to go, Alex?
Mr. Zain, do you have an objection to that? Are you okay? Okay, Mr. Padilla.
You ready? I'm sorry, Mr. Padilla.
Okay.
Call for a question.
Call a question, if there's no objection. We, if we could restate, Madam Clerk, what's before us, as well as the amendments that have been proposed.
There is an additional amendment, excuse me, additional motion by Councilmember Hahn that would request the city Ethics Commission and the city attorney to prepare an ordinance that would prohibit city contractors, contract bidders, land use applicants and their agents and lobbyists from contributing to and fundraising on behalf of city elected officials and candidates, political parties, ballot measures, or charities at the request of city elected official and candidates. And I believe that would be going to committee for discussion.
Ms. Pellum, as a point of information?
Yes, a point of information, if I might. The letter from the mayor was transmitted to the commission as well, and it will be an item that the commission is taking a look at at its next meeting on March 9th. So we expect that if there are additional recommendations to bring forward, you'll be hearing from the commission, and we'll be, of course, working closely with the city attorney's office on that.
Okay. Ms. Hahn, then to clarify, that that's going before the commission, and your motion is to send it to someplace or to take it up? Would you like to clarify where you'd like it to go?
Well, let's vote on sending it to committee, so they can hear the report from the Ethics Commission, that amendment.
Okay. So as Ms. Siskowski said, we'll vote on sending it to committee, so they can hear...
Just a motion.
Hold on, one person at a time, please. What Ms. Siskowski has just suggested is that we would send it to committee to hear what the commission says on this matter.
Let's all take a deep breath. Raising the issue, thank you, Ms. Hahn, it is very much similar to what the mayor had suggested in his letter, which is that the commission, and agenda is already. As the chair of the committee, so whether it comes by, we have this motion, whether it's transmitted from the commission, we do expect to take it up, but as the chair of the committee, let me tell all of us here, that I won't take it up until the commission has considered it and stated their opinions first.
Okay, to clarify, Ms. Hahn...
Whether the motion is necessary or not, or how we're sending it and referring it, it's going to play out that way.
Let's accept that, then, as a friendly amendment, if there's no objection to that. Okay. There were a couple other motions, Madam Clerk, that were made?
Mr. Labonge made a motion about sending campaign finance statements to neighborhood councils, and that would be...
Make a directive from Ethics Commission, all right, I'll send it to committee, but let me change it. Make it a directive for the Ethics Commission to make sure they're knowledgeable on where all that information is. So you don't have to send all that paper, but to make sure they're knowledgeable.
To work with the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment, okay. We can, we can make that as a friendly suggestion to the Ethics Commission to please work with the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment, to let all of our neighborhood councils know how they can get that information in a regular fashion.
We'll do that, thank you.
And the committee report, and the ordinance is before council.
Okay, great. That is now before us, colleagues. Please open the roll on the item, Madam Clerk. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
That item is approved. Congratulations. Fourth with, please. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, item number two was called special.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir. Mr. Villarosa.
Yes, I'd like unanimous consent to reconsider item number four for public hearing.
Members, we have a request you reconsider item number four for purposes of hearing from members of the public, and we have quite a few speaker cards on this item. It has been approved.
Yes, we can limit those speaker cards to one person who will speak on behalf of the Chinese American Museum and one person on the part of the Mexican Cultural Institute.
Okay, let's open the roll and reconsideration. Let's close the roll and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
And I think both Councilmembers, Villarosa and I, thank you for sending the courtesy of hearing from members of the public. And I know that the members of the public will keep it brief, because they don't want to change our minds. It's already been approved. So please, go ahead.
Thank you. I am Carol Baca, and this is Terry Liu, the president of the Chinese American Museum. On behalf of the Chinese American Museum, we want to show our deepest appreciation for the council to approve our, and support our museum expansion. And also, we would like to send the merchant at Olvera Street and all the various organizations support our museum. They fill out all the forms petition for us. And also, I'd like to thank for our community passionate supporters. There are about 200 who show up here, and they knew that we passed this motion, so I don't know how many left, but I would like our supporter to stand up and to thank you to support our museum. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Villarosa.
I believe there's one more speaker from the Mexican Cultural Institute.
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Susana Baldis. I'm the executive director of the Mexican Cultural Institute. I have beside me Mr. Dionisio Morales, one of our founding board members, and also John Garcia, who is a member of one of the merchant groups, EPC, at Olvera Street. I want to thank the city council, first of all, for their support, not only with this motion, but for the past years that the city has provided us our space at Olvera Street. The Mexican Cultural Institute is a nonprofit cultural organization. We were founded by the Mexican government in 1990, but we are a nonprofit community organization devoted to preserving, presenting Mexican and Mexican-American culture through educational workshops. We believe that preserving our cultures, we are creating a rich and diverse city. We are creating Mexican-Americans that are proud of their heritage, that are appreciative of culture. And we're also contributing to El Pueblo as cultural tourism destination. So once again, I thank you so much for your support, and let me just add that we are here for the whole community, not just for Mexican and Mexican-Americans. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This will again conclude public comment. I'll just take the courtesy of reading the names of those who submitted speaker cards into the record. Robert Tseng is here and supported this item, along with Kim Benjamin, Ervin Lay, Joseph Wong, Munson Kwak, Professor John Schultz, Leonard Smith, Juan Felipe Vallejo, Elba Smith, Peter Wu, and John Garcia. Thank you all for being with us. Mr. Villarosa.
Yes, members, I thank you for the courtesy, Mr. President. I know we have a busy schedule today, but you know, there are few things as important in Los Angeles as our history. And many of us, Councilmember Labonge and Garcetti and a number of others, have talked about the diversity of Los Angeles, and we talked about the 44 pobladores and ALA's beginning point. And we know that El Pueblo was that place where many of us first came, our ancestors first came. But it was also the place in another period in Los Angeles where we segregated, some of us, where we segregated the Chinese, where we segregated the Mexicans, the French, the Italians, those who were different, those with an accent, those who somehow didn't mix in in the minds of some of them. And yet, we also know that many times throughout the years, we've not actually read about those experiences. And so we believe it's very, very important that we honor the contributions of the Chinese, that we honor the contributions of those first Mexican settlers, that we say in this city, the city of the angels, the city where we come from every corner of the earth, that here, we're going to institutionalize the memory of those people who built this city, of those people who made this city what it is today. In many ways, this area was representative and emblematic of what ALA came to be, a place where we mixed, a place where we all come together. And so by this action, we're going to expand an area of city property, leasing to the Chinese American Museum and the Mexican Cultural Institute to ensure that our children and their children will know that memory, will know that history, will understand the contributions, will understand that there were dark periods in this city, periods when we scapegoated the Chinese, periods when we discriminated against blacks, Mexicans, and others. And now, we get to celebrate the contributions as well. So by this action, this city is going to be a partner with the Chinese American Museum and the Mexican Cultural Institute to ensure that in this city, we honor their memory, their history, their contributions, and in many ways, the future of this great city. I would urge your aye vote.
Thank you, Council President. I rise to support my colleague, Councilman Villarosa, and thank Councilman Labonge for also signing onto this motion. This is the period in which we celebrate New Year's. But I also want to share with you that there was a time in these halls when these communities that make up this rich city were not referred to as communities, but as problems. It was the Mexican problem, it was the Chinese problem, it was the black problem. Those days are gone. When you see this chamber filled with many leaders from Chinatown, I want to thank you for being here. You've got many leaders from the benevolent associations, various families, business investment districts, social service groups. I see many leaders who reflect all of these stakeholders. I want to thank you for being here. It's important to let everyone else know in the city, the pride we have in our culture, the pride we have in our own communities, and that we need to celebrate that culture for our children in the future. So we will not commit the same mistakes. We cannot be viewed as a problem. We must be the solution. Our children will be the answer to our problems once we educate them about our past. And for that reason, I want to thank my colleagues for their support. I want to thank you for such a strong presence here in the chamber, and for your endless devotion in changing Chinatown and all the neighboring neighborhoods, so that we can be that central area of this great regional center we call Southern California. Thank you very much.
Mr. Labonge.
Thank you very much. Stand up and give Antonio Villarosa and Ed Reyes a big hand for all their leadership right there, those councilmembers. I'm just pleased to see the work that's happening on El Pueblo, and Antonio, I got to point right at you and your leadership there, those who've helped before. And, but Antonio, you've taken the handoff, and you're driving hard and bringing this wonderful museum. I had a meeting over at the MTA Board, and I'd like to walk back...
I had a meeting over at the MTA Board, and I'd like to walk back and walk through the Pueblo and walk down that little alley and that brick new museum that's going to be expanded, the Mexican Cultural Institute, and it's important and the teachings. But when I went through the Chinese American Museum, I went up and saw the exhibit by Tyrus Wong, who's 93 years old, and Wendy, he lives in your district in Summit, he worked for Disney for many years, and this man was the creator, as an artist of Bambi. And this man, whose work is on exhibit right now, correct me, right now, and it got to me, because Bambi gets to us all, but it's a place that Tyrus Wong would now exhibit his work at 93, and the celebration is there, that welcomes people there. And it's a place across the street where 86 trains come through a day, plus the subway every 20 minutes, and brings this new crossroads to the Pueblo with this museum, with the Mexican Cultural Institute, with all the work on El Vera Street, and more needs to be done. So, I just wanted to congratulate my two colleagues and especially congratulate you, Antonio, because of your vision now of pushing this more, because there never should be a vacant building there. There should be someone in it all the time because it has a story. It has a story of the past, which is the story of great people who come here with all kinds of challenges. You know, you didn't mention the Irish when you talk about all the people that challenges. But my mother, I still, God bless my mother, God bless my mother. I know, all I can remember, many things my mother taught me. She taught, one of us, seven, eight boys, taught us never to be shabby Irish. She remembered her days in Lincoln Heights as the Irish, you know, battlers, that we all battled through our challenges, whatever life brings us. But now, we got a spot for the Mexican Cultural Institute, for the Chinese American Museum, which is so important about our history of this great city, because it will ignite, it will ignite the light of some young person's mind, it will warm the heart of someone who is a golden senior, and it will inspire others to do more and to open their arms wide and grab others in this great city to get to higher places. Congratulations in upward and upward for both these great institutes. Thank you very much. Thank you, councilmembers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Ambassador Laban, who is the man for our city who knows the history and who celebrates it and embodies it, as he would put it, an angel in a city of angels. I too want to thank councilmembers Villarosa and Reyes for their leadership today and rise and crowd support for a second, but we all get to vote on this twice, we feel so passionately about it today, in support of this today, for two great institutions, especially when you look at the Chinese American community here in Los Angeles, from 1870 when there was 200 people living in what was Old Chinatown, and this will be a recognition of where that Old Chinatown was, and a very important one, to a community now that's over 400,000 strong in the L.A. area. And that phenomenal growth facing all sorts of hardships, whether it was national quotas that cut off immigration and cut off families and cut off connections between caring people, or whether it was the Chinese massacre when 19 people were innocently killed at the hands of victims of racism of the time. I think the common ties between the Mexican-American community and the Chinese-American community are very strong, coming here as immigrants facing much discrimination, but also where they located. And here, we will be, and the reason I decided to speak now, we're going to be discussing next establishing our first Office of Immigrant Affairs in the city of Los Angeles, the first time in our history, long overdue, cities like Houston and New York and Chicago and others have done it a long time ago. But we are outside celebrating the diversity of Los Angeles and seeing just how many people come from so many different places to form the largest communities outside of those countries here in the United States. And it's a very proud day for all Angelinos, especially Mexican-American and the Chinese-American community, I have my full support. Thank you, Carol Baca, for your leadership too, and congratulations to everybody today on this historic day.
Mr. Zain?
I want to add my congratulations to my colleagues who brought this about and to the community. Carol Baca, the wife of our sheriff of Los Angeles County, thanks for being here, to our Chinese community, to our Hispanic community. We are in the San Fernando Valley, working with the Chinese community to build a Chinese cultural center. I know that New Year just took place, and I went to Tom Laban's celebrations, celebrating New Year's in the Chinese community. I know that we are a diverse city, and the diversity is the strength that makes us what we are. This is something that we need to recognize, we need to continue to bring people together. And if I look at this audience, we have a diverse audience, we have a diverse city council, and this is a reflection of what Los Angeles is about. So, I want to congratulate you all for making this happen, and we look forward to the Chinese cultural center in the San Fernando Valley. Councilmember Greg Smith and I are working with the Chinese community in the valley to try and bring that to fruition, and hopefully, it'll happen sooner than later. So, congratulations to all you and to my two distinguished colleagues who helped bring this about. Thank you all, thank you for being here this morning.
I have next on the queue Ms. Gruel, followed by Mr. Laban for a second time.
Well, I don't want to repeat all the wonderful things that have been said, but want to compliment that my colleagues in bringing this forward. El Pueblo is such a wonderful place and such a historical area in which so many cultures in Los Angeles have come together. And I think this is a wonderful opportunity to continue in that same vein and to support that community and to acknowledge Ms. Baca for her leadership as well on this issue and bringing it forward. I similarly, wholeheartedly support this item before us today and look forward to all of that, El Pueblo, that whole area there really being refurbished as a place in which we can go visit, and it has seen so much building and restoration that makes it a wonderful destination point for people who come to Los Angeles and can see the diversity of our city. So, congratulations, I'm glad to support it. Thank you.
Mr. Laban?
Can we get Yang Chow down on the Pueblo? You know, Yang Chow, that great okay.
Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, let's once again, Madam Clerk, open the roll on this item, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Let's send this item forthwith, and item three forthwith as well, please. Next item?
Item number two was called special for an amending motion, and that was by Councilmember Smith.
Mr. Smith, item number two.
Yes, Mr. President, there's just a technical correction in my motion, we're asking to come back in one week.
And it would be March 12th is the first available.
Okay, without objections? Next item?
Mr. President, council needs to vote on that.
So, open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Okay. Unanimous approval. Next item, please.
Item number five was called special by Councilmember Garcetti.
Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Colleagues, today is a historic day, a day in which the city of Los Angeles will join a number of its peer cities, places, as I mentioned before, like New York, Chicago, Houston, San Francisco, trying to do a better job to outreach to those people in our community who are immigrants and those who speak a different language by establishing an Office of Immigrant Affairs. I would move that we have, I know we have some speakers here who waited very patiently, and I would move, if there's no objection, if you can hold my balance of my time until after that for a 10-minute public hearing. We should be able to do it a little bit less than that, but 10-minute public hearing to hear from many advocates that we work with every single day in immigrant community, from many of our different ethnic communities as well, to give a few words on testimony in the process that's gone forward with Human Relations Commission, with the committee, and with the mayor's office as well. So, if there's no objection, I would so wish.
Members, we have a motion to reopen the public hearing. Is there any objection? If there's no objection, then I'll ask the clerk to please assist us in putting up a 10-minute clock. And as we do that, and we call forward Carlos Vaquero, followed by Susan Alva and Angel Fabian, and I'll call other speakers as we proceed with this public hearing. Please come forward at this time, and if you form a line behind the podium, that we're going to help pull them along real quick.
Good morning, members of the council. My name is Carlos Vaquero. I'm the executive director of Salad Salvadorian American Leadership and Educational Fund, and I'm here to support the mayor's initiative and Councilmember Garcetti's proposition to, for the Office on Immigration Affairs. This is a very historic day for all immigrants in Los Angeles, and I salute Councilmember Garcetti and the mayor for taking this courageous action, especially in these days that immigrants are under attack. I think it is the best alternative, the best way to deal with the issues that affect our community every day. I encourage you all to vote yes on these measures, and we look forward to working with you and the city of Los Angeles to improve the lives of the immigrants and the refugee community of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Susan Alva, Angel Fabian, Hamid Khan, and Mark Yoshida.
Good morning. I'm Susan Alva. I'm an attorney with the Migration Policy and Resource Center at Occidental College. I'm also here in support of this motion. I think the city council has a historic opportunity today to bring L.A. to the same level and the same areas that other cities in the country who've long had immigrant affairs offices. I think it's especially exciting that you have this opportunity to vote this office in on election day, where we, as we speak, have thousands of newly naturalized citizens taking part, some for the first time, in being able to vote. So, I encourage you to vote for passage of this, the creation of this new office. I also want to commend the mayor for being willing to absorb the cost of this office out of his own budget, since I'm sure that's also a concern, but we thank him for stepping up to the plate even in that regard financially. Thank you.
Thank you. Angel Fabian? Going once, going twice. Hamid Khan? No, Mark Yoshida, followed by Suzanne Foster, Nelson Motto, and Deepika Sharma.
Good morning, Mr. President, councilmembers. My name is Mark Yoshida. I'm a staff attorney with the Asian Pacific American Legal Center of Los Angeles. Immigrants are a precious resource in this city, and I think we all realize that. For all that they've given us economically and socially, we need to return that favor. And I believe this office is the right way to do that. Asian Pacific Islander and Latino immigrants are easy prey for immigration consultants who practice fraudulently, and they do this because they know that immigrants are often desperate for their help. Every day, hundreds and sometimes thousands of dollars of a family's hard-earned income is lost, and sometimes even worse, their legal status is permanently jeopardized. With this office, however, we can begin to give our communities the information that they need and lead them to the resources that can help them and their families. And they, in turn, become more trusting of city government, more involved in our neighbor's safety and security, more significant contributors to our economy, and better citizens of Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Suzanne Foster? No. Nelson Motto? Deepika Sharma? Followed by Leslie Williams and Angelica Salas.
Hi, I'm here on behalf of the Coalition to Abolish Slavery and Trafficking, CAST. Research people who've been brought here to be exploited economically and or sexually. This egregious act is often referred to as modern-day slavery. Many of our victims have a distrust or are very afraid of government and law enforcement. This is because it was instilled by their traffickers who tried to keep them in their situations, enslavement, and also because of their distrust of government in their home countries. We look forward and support this office and hope to bridge that gap and create a space for victims of trafficking and slavery to start to work with government and local law enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you. Leslie Williams?
Good morning. My name is Leslie. I am not an immigrant, and I'm not a refugee. I'm a graduate student at Cal State Long Beach. My field of study is anthropology. In my classes, I learn about the vital importance of inclusion and empowerment and representation in communities. I learn about the importance of members being able to access the power structures of their community. As an anthropologist, I believe that the broader the spectrum of voices that make up a community, the stronger and more inclusive that community can be. In that regard, I would like to voice my support of this new office, which will help to better represent and therefore empower immigrants and refugees within this community. Thank you.
Thank you. And Angelica Salas?
Good morning to everybody. It's always a pleasure to speak before the council. I just wanted to state how the CHIRLA, the Coalition for Human Immigrant Rights of Los Angeles, is in support of this proposal to open up the Office of Immigrant Affairs. We will be joining other cities like New York, Houston, San Francisco in having this office. However, Los Angeles has the largest population of immigrants way beyond these cities, in many instances, more immigrants than in many other, in whole states. Many times, the immigrants that we work with feel that city government is not about them, that the city government does not represent them, that you, as councilmembers, don't represent them or their interests. And I think that having this office sends a very strong message that, yes, in the city of Los Angeles, where over 42% of the population is immigrant, the city is opening its doors and it's saying, here, we're going to have an office that is going to link you to city services, to community services, but that is also going to be a place where you can have a political voice. And I think that your vote and your support of this office is going to send a message for all the residents of Los Angeles, but the message is going to go way beyond its borders, beyond all of California and the rest of the country. And I just also want to take the opportunity for your leadership as a council in supporting immigrant rights in the past couple of years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment on this item once again. Don't have any more speaker cards. Turning now to council discussion, Mr. Garcetti, the balance of your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you, all of the folks who were a part of this, and I see you, and I should thank Fabiola Vilches, who now works at City 10, but who helped out with this as well, Shane Goldsmith, who's here for my staff, and the Human Relations Commission. And I wanted to, Rabbi Feiling would like to come forward for a second. I wanted to thank the Human Relations Commission for their help in putting this together. Okay, just let me thank you for that. Colleagues, this is a tough budget year, and I wouldn't work on something like this, none of us would in good conscience, if this was about creating a new line item in ongoing years we had to find money for. We've been very clear about that in the Housing Community Economic Development Committee, Mr. Padilla, Mr. Parks, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Ludlow, were very clear, making sure that we didn't encumber the city further. And so, some grant monies that are pre-1996 will pay for these positions this year, and in ongoing years, every single year, the mayor's office is committed to do this with ongoing, sorry, with existing resources within the mayor's office. So, no new allocation of money will be needed. Immigrants have built the city, immigrants founded this city, and immigrants continue to drive the city. We have the largest immigrant population of any city in America. We have 42% of our population as immigrants, over 130 languages spoken in our city. We all know from campaigning door to door just what that translates into when you have Thai refugee living next door to a immigrant from Cameroon, living next door to somebody from Guatemala, living next door to somebody who has come from Armenia. We know that in this city too, that there are too many people who don't know about the job that government plays. They mistrust government because of the country that they've come from, where government didn't represent something good, or we haven't done our job in making government a user-friendly place, whether it's a hard-working worker who wants to know about his or her rights as a worker, whether or not it's somebody who wants to be a witness to a crime but doesn't know whether or not they should go to a police station to be a witness, whether it's a business, we have thousands of immigrant businesses here, small business that doesn't know that they can have a loan, or a working family that doesn't know they qualify for something like the earned income tax credit. We are increasingly having two cities, you know, John Edwards, as a presidential candidate, speaks very movingly about two Americas, we have two Los Angeleses. And today, we try to unite those two together by saying that we won't have two economies in the city, that we won't have two political systems in the city, that we won't have two social classes in the city, but that we will try to act as we always have, as one city, that we will come together, no matter what country you come from, no matter what language you speak, no matter what color of your skin is, no matter what religion you believe in, to make sure that government and the doors of this city hall are open to all, that all have access, that all have a voice, that all are represented. I mentioned this before, but you look at our peer cities, places like Houston, where there's, I think, over 100 people that work in their offices of immigrant affairs, where New York City has dozens of people who work advocating to make sure New York City has dozens of people who work advocating to make sure that we bring these policies that we discussed here already together, to make sure that we bring the access to services together. This is a historic step to do that. Thank you, thank you, thank you to the folks who made this happen. We will have advisory committee boards that councilmembers and Human Relations Commission will work to appoint, 15 members, colleagues. Those terms will be limited, but they will also be ongoing. So this will be a permanent board, and it will be composed mostly of some of the community-based organizations that spoke today. And this office will report to council once a year so that we can hear what the office is doing, positions that we're taking, the services that we're providing, and making sure that the message is getting out there. Again, just in conclusion, I ask for your support today. I thank the community for being such a strong voice, for suggesting this years ago, something that I campaigned on when I was first a candidate, and it seemed like a no-brainer at the time. In a difficult budget year, it makes it even more difficult. But today, we opened that door, and I look forward to building that room full of opportunity for all of our immigrants in the years to come. Thank you.
Mr. Cardenas.
I think it's very important for us to recognize, and I want to congratulate Eric Garcetti for his responsible manner in which he's brought this motion before us to get this Office of Immigrant Affairs off the ground here in this city of Los Angeles, this diverse city of Los Angeles. And I think that this city has a lot to offer. And one thing that I'd like the viewers to understand is, this Office of Immigrant Affairs is going to be attending to a lot of people. For example, case in point, you can be an immigrant in the city of Los Angeles and be a U.S. citizen. Think about that. You come here as an immigrant, you love this country, you're raising your family here, you want to be a part of it, you assimilate so much that you become a citizen of this country, yet at the same time, you may have some language barriers, some cultural differences that you're still working on so that you can assimilate. This office is going to allow people to be able to do a better job, to become a better citizen, to be able to assist this city, and also take advantage of what this city has to offer. So I think this is a great opportunity for us to recognize not only the diversity of this city, but the fact that we are all connected and the fact that we have more to offer. And this is going to be a great, great opportunity for us to encourage other people to assimilate and other people to understand that we, in this country, have governments that serve, not governments that oppress, not governments that want to repel you away from them, but governments that actually serve and welcome you to participate. And I give another example. This office can help almost anyone. For example, if you're a gardener, we could probably help you. You run a business, business taxes, things of that nature, you would like clarification or want to know where to go. If you happen to be a business owner in general, similar issues you might cover, hiring of people, what kind of forms you have to fill out, things of that nature, this office should be able to at least direct you on where to go so you can actually act and do things properly. If you're governor of the state of California, you could be an immigrant. And I offer myself, should anybody come to this office who happens to be in Los Angeles and wants help on how to deal with the legislature or something like that, I'll be more than happy, call my office, I'll be more than happy to help and assist. I just want to give the example that please don't look at immigrants only as people who just came yesterday. Please look at immigrants as our past, our present, and our future, and as we welcome them, as they participate with us, as they clean our homes, as they clean our yards, and as they run businesses, and they become governor of this state, we have to make sure that we understand that this is a diverse state, and we are all connected. And this office is only going to help us make sure that we do a better job for all of our constituents. Thank you, Eric.
Are the members wishing to be heard on this item? If not, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Unanimous, see if it agrees. Next item, please.
Item number seven was called special, I believe by Councilmember Missakowski.
Mr. Kowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. This was on last week, and it is a committee report affecting a 245 action to take jurisdiction of an action that the Fire Commission had done to award a contract for some temporary work. And I don't object to the Personnel Committee saying, let's, we already have asserted jurisdiction, but if we adopt this report, it says we are not approving the contract and are sending it back to the Fire Commission. And I would like to amend this with a friendly amendment, I hope it's considered a friendly amendment, to indicate, bottom line, there is some work that needs to be done. That work, were it done, would save the city regularly about $112,000 a year, but more importantly, it would save outside entities who come to look for plans, to where gas lines are, where other pipelines are, which are fire department records. It would save outside interests more than $1 million a year. The report actually says $2 million a year by not having to pay for someone to be there, to stand over them, to pull the files, et cetera. And it would put all of this online, where this goes along with everything we're talking about in terms of making government easier. So my problem with this is that it didn't go far enough. And if we are rejecting the contract because of issues it raises about going into too many outside contracts and not letting city employees do the job, I would like to amend this to say that the city council would request that the Fire Department, Fire Commission approve the hiring of, I think it would be three clerk typists for the temporary position from up to six months to do this work so that they can save money, we can save money, but the same amount that we might pay to the outside contract, perhaps a little less, we really should go ahead and authorize the Fire Department to hire temporary workers to get this job done and indicate that the city council would be willing to unfreeze those positions so they could be hired to do this work, recognizing that they're temporary, recognizing that there might be something else that they can then go into if there is a need. And I think some of my colleagues have been talking with the city employee unions about the overall issue of contracting out, perhaps too much contracting out, and we really need to get a handle on that, and I'm willing to support that. But this, as I say, I don't think went quite far enough to make sure that we underscore, we want the job to get done, we want to save money in our long-term budget, we want to save money for the outside entities, making the city more business-friendly. So let's get the job done by amending this to say, Fire Department, hire these workers temporarily, understanding they're temporary, but here's the authorization to do it. So that would be my friendly amendment on this, and then allow us to adopt the committee report to say we are rejecting this contract.
Mr. Kowski or Mr. Ludlow.
I'm going to, I know I pushed my button quicker than my colleague did, but it's Chair of Personnel, he can speak first, and then I'll follow.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Ludlow. I support that amendment, and I think it's appropriate to do that. And what we want to do, Mr. Ludlow has a motion that we're going to be discussing down the road regarding this whole issue of temporary workers and putting a pool together, but I support that the Fire Department will get the mission accomplished. We want to limit the number of outside contracts that are generated. I met with members of the Fire Commission prior to having this come to Personnel Committee, and I've also met with the union representatives regarding this, and there's a concern that we have city employees, we have tasks for city employees to do, and it should be the exception rather than the rule that we funnel things to outside contracts, outside vendors. So it's a friendly amendment that I'll accept. The Personnel Committee was unanimous in our decision, and I think that the Fire Department needs to recognize that we always have an open ear, we always have an open door. When they need something, they can come to us, and we can discuss it. This came to us by surprise where that contract was approved, and we would wish in the future that departments come to us. As the Chair of the Personnel Committee, we're always available to discuss these issues and other issues, and also serving a public safety with my other colleagues. We don't avoid those issues when it comes to discussion and trying to resolve it. So I think this will settle the matter on this particular issue. And down the road, Councilmember Ludlow and I just seconded that motion regarding we put together a pool that we'll be able to draw from in the future with similar situations that we have a need for individuals. So I would recommend that we move forward with unanimous approval of this, give the Fire Department the go-ahead to do it, these temporary workers for the period of time they will complete that task. Thank you.
Mr. Ludlow.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Councilmember Missakowski, for taking the lead on this item, and I appreciate the spirit of which our Chair of our Personnel Committee accepted the friendly amendment. And also, thanks to Pat Oskar for stepping in and sort of red-flagging what we were doing here. I support this motion, I support the friendly amendment by Missakowski, but I do, Councilmember Missakowski, but I did want to mention, colleagues, that today, I've introduced a motion which has been seconded by Councilmember Zine to actually dig in on a session of our temporary agency hiring practices. In the spirit of what Councilman Parks is trying to do in the Budget Committee, all of us are digging in, trying to find ways of saving dollars. This came up some time ago where we were looking at how much money the city of L.A. is spending on executing contracts with some of the private sector temporary hiring halls. And the reality is between the fees that we're paying them per hour and the finder's fee that we're paying them when we find out that we actually want to hire those employees, and the assorted fees or related fees that we pay these firms, we could do much better by creating our own pool of full-time, permanent city employees that have temporary assignments in nature. And in fact, what was interesting, and I know Mr. Fujioka and Mr. Deaton were both looking at this as well, and I appreciated their leadership on this, is that frequently we find that the work that's being done, are similar projects in nature, it's not specialized services. Now, there will be those moments where there are specialized needs where we can't find that from a ready pool of temporary, permanent city workers. And obviously, in those cases, we want to be able to go out and find somebody who has an expertise in a certain area. But as Cheryl Parisi and others have asked me, have mentioned, you know, there are great opportunities to have city workers who are familiar with the city structure, are familiar with moving from department to department. Many of these assignments are clerical in nature, they don't require long-term extensive training in some specialty area, like biochemistry, or hazmat materials, or nuclear physicists, or what, physiology. We don't have to deal with that. It's usually other projects that can be filled on a quick, short-term basis. And the last opportunity here is really to uphold what so many of us have been standing for, which is ensuring that anybody who works for the city of L.A. is paid at a rate that is a living wage, who pays them dignity and respect, and affords them and their children a health plan. And that is something that they don't get from many of these temporary agencies. And so, this motion, colleagues, will be coming forward, we'll be taking this up in the next few days. I encourage you to take a look at this, and I appreciate it, Councilmember Zine's support. And again, I rise in support of Councilmember Missakowski's friendly amendment, and look forward to digging in on a cost-saving measure and an opportunity to really create a full-time, permanent pool of temporary assignment workers under the city of L.A. that will save us money and ensure that the bottom line is that every employee for the city of L.A. is being paid a good wage and has a health plan. Thank you.
Mr. Lavang.
Mr. City Attorney, could I talk about that pool? We are getting astray from the actual veto or the approval of this contract.
Okay, because I do want to talk about that pool someday.
Well, it just came in as a motion, Mr. Lavang. It's working its way through.
It'll come up next week, but it's very much on the issue of the temporary work assignments that we're about to hire right now.
Other members on this item?
Excuse me, Mr. President. Clarification on what council's adopting. They would be adopting Councilmember Missakowski's motion in addition to the committee report that would be vetoing the Fire Commission action.
That is correct. Is that clear to everybody? Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 15, called special by Councilmember Gruhl.
Ms. Gruhl.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to highlight this, colleagues, in case we have future ordinances that are reflective of taking seizing vehicles relative to, we have nuisance abatements, drug activities, illegal dumping, prostitution, and my favorite subject, speed racing, drag racing. What this does today is allows us to amend the ordinance that provides that a person who drives the vehicle in violation of this section is also prohibited from purchasing that forfeited vehicle from the city. It also allows us to provide the option of destroying vehicles seized under this ordinance. So we think it's very important to do this. Mr. Cardenas and I, Mr. Zine, attended a press conference several months ago with Chief Bratton and Rocky Dalgadillo, where we had two vehicles seized during an operation for drag racing, and we were prepared to crush those cars, and we found that there was a small loophole we had not closed in this ordinance, and so we would like to be able to do that. It's been a successful ordinance that has almost stopped drag racing in San Fernando Valley and other parts of the city of Los Angeles. This gives us that additional tool, and we'll invite you to that press conference, Mr. Lavang, when we smash those cars that have been involved in drag racing and endangering the lives of so many people in our community. So I just ask for an aye vote today.
Mr. Reyes.
I want to rise and thank my colleagues. My colleagues have been focused on this issue. Just for the record, I just want to let the LAPD know that I do have drag racing in my district right along Stadium Way by Dodger Stadium. There's a section there that is pretty well-fitted, that happens on Friday and Saturday evenings. And I have one more spot around the Bodry site, which is right here off of downtown. Early in the mornings between 1:00 and 4:00 a.m. on Saturdays, people are literally racing up and down Bodry, as drag racing. So it's happening everywhere, and hopefully, people that are listening to this discussion will take the time to call it in, and if you know there's racing going on, let us know so we can have these new tools, which Councilman Gruhl has been putting in our tool box to enforce these laws. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Other members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
There is a special one on the desk, presented by Councilmember Han, seconded by Councilmember Lavang, and the City Attorney will speak to the findings.
Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will recite the facts as presented to me by the maker of the motion for the council's consideration of the adequacy of the findings. Yesterday, a Blue Line train was involved in a fatal collision with an automobile at the Blue Line Crossing near Wilmington and Imperial Highway. There is a need for DOT to immediately review and possibly rectify this condition as soon as possible. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2. If such a finding is made, council may then consider the subsequent motion.
Thank you very much. Any questions on the findings? Members wishing to be heard on the findings? If not, let's open the roll on the findings, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Special one is now before us. Members wishing to be heard on the motion itself. Ms. Han.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I appreciate you finding that we could hear this today. You may or may not be aware that, again, yesterday, we had a fatality in my district at Wilmington and Willowbrook. Apparently, there have been several accidents also at the same location. And in reading the article in the L.A. Times, there was one sentence about the MTA working, trying to work with the city to make sure that proper signage or guardrails is in place. I took that as something I thought we needed to do today, which is to direct our Department of Transportation to go out there immediately and look at possibly signage, look at guardrails. Maybe we should look at and maybe make a recommendation ultimately to the MTA to relook at, maybe a complete reconfiguration of that area. I know when my father championed the Blue Line many, many years ago, one of his biggest concerns was the fact that ultimately, there was not in place grade separation. And we have seen way too many accidents, particularly in this area, and unfortunately, too many fatalities as a result of these trains crossing at grade levels. So I hope you'll support me, make this a priority practically today for Department of Transportation, get out there and look at why there are some accidents and what we can do in the future to prevent these kinds of tragedies happening. Thank you.
Mr. Lavang.
Thank you, Ms. Han. Thank you for bringing this unfortunate tragedy to our attention, not only as a council member and a member of the MTA Board. I think it's very incumbent that we bring all parties together, including our Department of Transportation. And members, if you're not familiar with this intersection, it's somewhat like a Y-intersection, which could be easily confusing to someone unless it's properly signed. So there's no time like the absolute present. So with this action, hopefully, the department can move swiftly, and today, to be down there to take any necessary steps, including signage, K-rail, or even restrictions. I know one of the, one of my uncles, and I can talk about history a little, as you
as you know, members, one of my uncles told me long ago about the challenges between the automobile and the red car. And now it's the Blue Line, or the Gold Line, or the Green Line, and the challenge, I think Green Line is separated, but there was always a challenge, and driver education and safety is so important. So I think it's incumbent that this motion be passed, and that a call be placed by the city clerk immediately to the general manager of the Department of Transportation, alerting him that they should be out there to absolutely this afternoon, to see what can be done, if not already. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Laban. Other members wishing to be heard on this item? If not, please open the roll on special one, please close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith, please. Next item.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motion shall be posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Cardenas requests to be excused Friday, March 12th, to leave at 12:45, and Friday, April 30th, to leave at 12:30 for city business and personal business, and those both meet council policy.
Mr. Cardenas is excused.
Councilmember Garcetti requests to be excused Wednesday, March 24th, to leave at 11:45 for city business. That meets council policy.
Mr. Garcetti is excused.
Councilmember Vera Gose requests to be excused Friday, March 12th, to arrive late for city business. A motion is required.
Mr. Cardenas moves. Mr. Vera Gose is excused.
Councilmember Misakowski requests to be excused to arrive late March 12th for city business. A motion is required.
Ms. Hahn moves. Ms. Misakowski is excused.
And Councilmember Brule requests to be excused Friday, May 28th for personal business. That meets council policy.
Ms. Brule is excused.
And that clears the desk, Mr. President.
Colleagues, this is the end of our agenda. We have one announcement today. Announcements, so that then a reminder, Mr. Laban, for people to get out and vote before 8 o'clock.
No, I just wanted to remind everyone today, Dr. Seuss would be 100 years old, and I think it's just appropriate that we salute Dr. Seuss. And this was a birthday present my lovely wife Bridget gave to my son Charles Thomas. I wish I could do what they do in Caru. They sure know how to say happy birthday to you. Anyway, happy birthday, Dr. Seuss. I got this.
Ms. Misakowski.
Mr. President, I would just like to remind everyone that tomorrow, I think we've got something like close to 90 items on an agenda. It's our last meeting before we adjourn for recess for League of Cities, and there are 13 executive closed sessions. So maybe we want to think about making arrangements to not be leaving early for lunch.
Yeah, I may want to change your lunch plans tomorrow, we're going to be here for a while. Mr. Zine?
Maybe we should, like, start at 6 o'clock in the morning, then we'll be done at 6 o'clock at night. I'm just joking about that, Mr. Laban. Couple announcements. City Girls' Soccer, El Camino Real High School in my district, defending champions, will be in the semifinals tomorrow. And the championship game is this Saturday, 4:30, East Los Angeles College. And also of note, California State Academic Decathlon, March 7th through 9th in Modesto, city champion Taft High School is going to be joined by other city wild card teams, which include El Camino from my district, also Reseda High. Other participants, L.A. High, Marshall High, of course, how Laban's graduated with honors, North Hollywood High, Venice, San Pedro, and Palisades Charter. That's where the California State Academic Decathlon. And people want to keep watch out for the Valley schools coming in numero uno. Thank you.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. Laban, for that. March 11th, Dr. Seuss is getting a star on the Hollywood Walk of Fame. So folks, if they want to come out, who are big Dr. Seuss fans, come down on March 11th to the Walk of Fame, 11 o'clock in the morning. Well, good, and Eric, I want to congratulate you for the beautiful Academy Awards this last weekend. There was a highlight on our city with-- I lost because I was nominated in every category of the Lord of the Rings, wasn't I? Oh, I know. But no, it was a very exciting event, and I know two members of the council volunteered and assisted, if I believe, one, the other one didn't. But, Mr. Smith, thank you. But I wanted to just say--
Gracias.
I always were, I'm sorry, Dennis. I always want to say, Eric, I'm glad Dr. Seuss is getting one, but as you're the Hollywood councilman, I want to fight for Smokey the Bear, because he deserves one too. He has the longest-running public service announcement in the history of this country. He doesn't have a star on the Walk of Fame, so happy birthday, Dr. Seuss. Let's get Smokey the Bear right behind him.
Mr. Laban, if we did that, he couldn't come to the ceremony, because he's still working. That's what it's about. Ms. Hahn, announcement? No? Other announcements? Do you have adjourning motions? Please rise for adjourning motions. Adjourning tributes. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Jim McQuiston, activist and representative, let me know about the passing of Sterling Kingsbury and Bill Kingsbury, longtime resident who operated plumbing business on Santa Monica beside the Quenga Library. There was a memorial last Saturday, but we would like to have the council today recognize their passing, and may they both rest in peace. Thank you, Mr. McQuiston.
Mr. Laban?
I mentioned this, I was very proud of all of us being at Officer Ricardo Ligar 's funeral, excuse me, and I think the words were elegantly spoke by his brother, by the captain of Newton, by the chief of police, by our mayor, and by the Cardinal of Los Angeles. And I think it was a tremendous tribute to a fallen officer. And I was proud, the first time in my memory as a staffer or a council member, that all 15 members of the City Council were there to salute the memory of this great police officer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Laban. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have three adjourning motions. I asked that we adjourn in memory of Ivaleos Suarez. He's a 61-year-old armed guard that was gunned down in the 8th District on Monday, March 1st. Unfortunately, passed away during surgery at Daniel Freeman Hospital. Also, long-term 8th District resident, Ella Mae Jackson, born in Spring Ridge, Louisiana, January 1926. She was a homemaker, resided in Los Angeles in '65. She passed away at the age of 78 on Friday, February 27th, and funeral services will be held at Trinity Baptist Church on March 6th, 11 a.m. And also, third one, Emmeline Dillard, was born in Holly Grove, Arkansas, August 6th, 1920. Passed away at the age of 83 on February 19th. She attended Virginia State College in Petersburg, Virginia, majored in elementary education and music. She later moved to Los Angeles, married Thaddeus Dillard, and where the two have been raised, three children. They attended St. Paul's Baptist Church. She is most noted in that she was the, opened up a beauty, her own beauty salon in the early '60s, and located 83rd and Broadway. She became the first successful African-American hairweaver in Los Angeles, and was a chartered member of the International Association. Her more than 50 years association with Booker T. Washington High School alumni association in Tulsa, Oklahoma, is one of her highlights of her life. She leaves two children and a variety of other relatives.
Mr. Weiss.
President, Ms. Brule and I would like to ask that you join us in adjourning in memory of Daniel Borsten, who is the great librarian of Congress, an extraordinary historian, made so many contributions to our country. His family, or members of his family live in Studio City, including Lenny Borsten, whom many of you know at the L.A. Philharmonic, and her husband and children in Studio City. So I think we should adjourn in memory of the great American, Mr. Laban, Daniel Borsten.
Ms. Perry? All members. Mr. Zine?
Thank you, Mr. President. Adjourning for Eve Levinson, passed away January 31st. Eve was a mother, and a wife, and a good friend of the community, member of the Just for Fun Club at the West Valley Jewish Community Center for over 10 years, member of Women's American Ort for over 12 years, with the National Jewish Council for Women for over 12 years, member of the Senior Shalom Club at West Valley Jewish Community Center for over 12 years. She resided in Woodland Hills for over 30 years, passed away at 81 years of age. Eve survived by her husband, Irv. They were married for 28 years. Also, her daughter Judith Jordan, son-in-law Larry Cohen, and stepdaughter Frances Levinson. May Eve Levinson rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.